Hello, good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's public hearing for Wednesday, June 2nd, 2021, relative to Bill 2021 1414. My name is Deborah Gross. I am the councilwoman from District 7, and I chair Intergovernmental Affairs. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title of the bill?
Absolutely. Bill 1414, ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Article III, overlay zoning district, Chapter 907, development overlay districts, removing subsection 90702K for IPod 6 inclusionary housing overlay district and creating 90704A inclusionary housing overlay district.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's see, I think for the record, we are joined by Councilwoman Wilson and Councilwoman Strasburger. I don't see any council other people in the room for now. And we also have with us members from the city planning committee, city planning department, and the zoning department. And I see Director Dash and Christopher Corbett from city planning department. And I also see Corey Lehman, our zoning director. So the first order of business, I believe, is a presentation from the city planning department. Director, would you like to take the floor?
That's correct. Thank you, councilwoman. And the bill that we're here to discuss is the creation of a permanent overlay district to the addition of a new permanent overlay district to the zoning code. While we bring up the presentation. So my name is Andrew Dash. I am the director of the Department of City Planning. You know, I'm joined by Christopher Corbett, who is a planner with the department. He and I will give the presentation, really just giving a brief overview on inclusionary zoning and what that is. Next slide, please. We'll talk a little bit around the process in Lawrenceville, which many on, you know, people that will speak later and councilwoman yourself, you know, have been involved in. And just give an update as to, you know, what this overlay district is, what the purpose of it is, and the process that led us to the city council hearing. Next, please. So all of this started back in 2016 with the creation of the city's Affordable Housing Task Force. You know, did have four committees, you know, that worked on that specifically, that held a series of public meetings, had members of the, you know, the housing industry, community organizers, advocates, elected officials. Next slide, please. And, you know, out of that came a series of recommendations. One was the creation of the Housing Opportunity Fund. You know, you see the others on here on the screen. One of them was around inclusionary zoning, more specifically, and inclusionary housing. And at the conclusion of the city's Affordable Housing Task Force, the Department of City Planning then went and worked with the Grounded Solutions Network to explore inclusionary zoning further. And so with that, there was an exploratory committee and a subsequent report. Next slide. And, you know, then we, you know, went into the pilot in Lawrenceville through an interim planning overlay district. And, you know, Christopher will talk more about that process. The interim planning overlay district was something, you know, is a control that the city can use for up to 24 months. You know, there's initial IPod that's put in place by council for 18 months, can be extended for an additional six months. In that case, you know, in the cases of the interim planning overlay districts, what it is, is it provides temporary zoning in an area while we work through a permanent solution. And, you know, and that's what was done here. The interim planning overlay district, you know, was created back in July of 2019. And so we are, you know, we are approaching the 24-month limit on that interim planning overlay district. Next slide. And so inclusionary zoning, you know, what it does is it ties the construction of market rate housing with affordable housing. And so, you know, that occurs when there is new development or rehabilitation of existing housing units in the city of Pittsburgh. And it does then, in this case, and in Pittsburgh's case, make those inclusionary units affordable to people of a certain income level, which are low to moderate income residents. Next slide. And so before we did the interim planning overlay district, there were places where inclusionary zoning did exist. However, it exists on an incentive scale where we allowed for additional height or additional, you know, or reduced setback to the riverfront for, you know, through the performance point system. One of those potential points was inclusionary zoning. But then the first place in which it was mandatory, there was mandatory inclusionary zoning for developments of 20 units or greater was in that interim planning overlay district for the three Lawrenceville neighborhoods. And, you know, we'll talk about the IZO, the inclusionary zoning overlay, but the intention is to make that permanent and then make it something that can be applied to other neighborhoods. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Christopher, who will talk about the process in Lawrenceville more specifically.
All right, thanks so much, Director Dash. So inclusionary zoning in Lawrenceville. It first started off with three Housing For All Community Meetings dating back in September 2018, October 2018, and November. The interest and support that we gathered from Lawrenceville kind of volunteer as Director Dash, volunteering to become the pilot neighborhood for inclusionary zoning IPod, so the interim overlay. This was in collaboration with Councilwoman Gross's office, as well as Lawrenceville United and Lawrenceville Corporation. So just to go over the timeline for the interim overlay district, it was a public process, as I stated, between fall and the winter of 2018. Planning Commission recommendation of approval in April 2019. Then we did the city council passage in July 25th, 2019. And then we went back to Planning Commission for a recommendation to extend the time period for six months. That was done in December of 2020. And then city council was able to hear the extension and approve the extension. That was in January 2021 of this year. And Planning Commission then recommended approval for the zoning code amendment to remove the interim planning overlay district and to create the inclusionary zoning overlay as a permanent, and that was in April of this year, so April 6, 2021. With the extension of the IPod is set to expire July 25th, 2021. Here is the map of the Lawrenceville Inclusionary Zoning Overlay District. This is the same map that we use for all of our mellers as well. What you're seeing is upper, lower, and central Lawrenceville, and a buffer of about 200 and 250 feet outside of it. Since the inclusionary zoning pilot started, new affordable rentals and for sale units have been kind of secured, if you will, with, which is arsenal to a one, face to millhouse, kind of signing up for, to provide 35 rental units. Holy Family and E Properties and Developments are on board to provide five for sale units. So the recommendation, so the amendments to the ordinance be made after the housing needs assessment is updated in fall of 2021. So our recommendation to council is to, and we'll talk, I'll talk about this more. The housing needs assessment that was done in 2016 is now being updated. It is aligned with our comprehensive plan for the next 20 years. And that's where a lot of our work and amendments from to the inclusionary zoning and our housing work will come from. We also will recommend, and this is a recommendation that is coming from the housing needs assessment, to implement a housing affordability tracker, citywide snapshot of progress made in reaching goals of creating deserving and investing in affordable housing. We know that this is important because from our 2016, we had a gap of 20,000 housing units. And then in order to set an attainable goal for the years ahead, we are looking for that updated housing needs assessment to kind of identify the missing gap. And then how the city, we can actually track it to make sure that we are on par on creating more affordable housing units. So inclusionary zoning purpose and process. The IZO, inclusionary zoning ordinance, is being created to make permanent the IPod 6 with all the same regulations at this time as standards. Although at this point, the IZO is only being mapped to the existing IPod 6 boundaries within Lawrenceville, creating the permanent overlay allows for its expansion into neighborhoods at a later date. So let's talk about our planning commission process. Council approved the IPod extension, as I mentioned earlier, to expire on July 25th of 2021. The Department of City Planning presented to Planning Commission at a briefing March 9th of this year, and then hearing in action on April 6th. Playing commission of, the planning commission of the city of Pittsburgh recommends approval to city council of the zoning code amendment to remove the interim planning overlay and to create the inclusionary zoning overlay for Lawrenceville. Planning Commission did, however, provide us with some of the conditions on approving this. The following actions be taken prior to and advised by the HRA study. HRNA is the consultant that we hire to do the updated housing needs assessment and to invest study, further study. So for accessibility, resale price, auditing and eligibility, creating a centralized and decentralized management and training around the affordable units, and an increase of 15% in lieu of 10%, the changing certain of the legislation. We have here that the Planning Commission is stressing to provide an increase in affordable units to be created from 10% right now, which is the minimum requirement, to 15%. We are looking for, our department is committed to increasing from 10% with amendments, but we are asking to, that our work from the housing needs assessment kind of provide more detail around the number of percentage units for a minimum requirement for affordable units. So some of our next steps and some of the work that we're doing, forging PGH, as you know, is currently being developed and will be in development through the spring of 2022. It is a citywide comprehensive land use plan. It'll look at future land use for housing density, intensity, and affordability, focus on areas in people's most vulnerable to be displaced. Our housing working group as one of six topical teams is overseeing the plan. The housing needs assessment, or HNA, which I spoke about earlier today, is being developed through the fall of 2021. Our consultant is HRNA advisors, as well as a local firm, E Holdings. They're working with us to update the 2016 housing needs assessment, that kind of birthed all of the affordability talk that we're doing today. We're updating information and analysis for, and analysis five years later. Our neighborhood plans will continue to do those. It'll identify IZ as a zoning tool for their neighborhood, and IZO can be applied to those neighborhoods. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen, and I'll invite Director Dash back up, and I'll turn it over to council.
So that's the end of the presentation, Director. Did you have anything to add? I wasn't clear.
No, so just to, you know, just to be clear as we close out, you know, the, you know, the bill that's before council is a replacement of the interim planning overlay district with the new IZO, inclusionary zoning overlay. And that would be mapped to the three Lawrenceville neighborhoods. We did keep all of the standards the same, although Planning Commission made of that recommendation to city council to make sure that the department looks very specifically into those items, you know, of increasing the affordability rate, of looking at, you know, education and training, and those other items. So those, those were things that, noting that the expiration of the interim planning overlay district is for late July, that getting this permanent replacement in place is what's important. And then concluding the housing policy work through the housing needs assessment will potentially bring additional amendments to the IZO or to inclusionary zoning or to the zoning code more broadly around not only inclusionary zoning, but other housing elements to the zoning code in the future. And so we anticipate that those, you know, those amendments, since the housing needs assessment work will be done in the fall, that those would be following that, you know, in line with the Planning Commission's recommendation and the recommendations that come from that study. So thank you.
You can probably go into that in more detail when we actually have it on the council agenda. But just to summarize, if council does nothing now, this mandatory inclusionary zoning IPod ends on July 25th.
That is correct. It would expire.
The proposal in front of us now is to make it a permanent overlay district. Because an interim planning overlay district that we have in place now may not last any longer than 24 months, and that 24 months ends on July 24th.
That's correct.
Great, so we have registered speakers. I have 22 registered speakers in front of us. And so our next, I'm a business is to hear from the registered speakers, who each are allowed three minutes. And then after that, we will allow comments from council members. I don't see any additional members here. So we are still, we have Councilwoman Wilson and Councilwoman Strasburger with us. Okay, so I'm going to read for our speakers who have been waiting. I'm going to read in order of the registration, but I'll also tell the next person in line, since it's hard to kind of wait and wait and wait on these phone lines for your moment to speak. And then, Madam Clerk, correct me, I think, so if you're on the phone waiting for your turn to speak, you had to do star six when the little robot voice tells you it's your turn, right? And that you've been unmuted, and you had to do star six on your phone?
I think they release some phones of you on the cell phone. I think it does require a star six.
But otherwise, if you're, if you're logged in by Zoom, then you're just kind of like turned on.
David will turn them on.
So you do listen for your name coming up next, so that you're ready for your turn. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So our first registered speaker is Ikahana Hal Makina. And following Ikahana Hal Makina, we will have Tim Stevens.
Greetings and peace of peace, light, and love. My title is Ikahana Hal Makina. I am the Grand Inca of the Oerkawak Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And I thank you for allowing me to speak today, members of the city council. And I want to speak directly to the people who present it today. Thank you also for being here and providing the information that you get. The displacement of people specifically in Lawrenceville, the high volume of displacement of people who were in that area, who are now priced out and can't afford to live in Lawrenceville or any other neighborhood in the city that was once affordable. Living in Pittsburgh is no longer affordable for many people. Not even the desire to buy a home in the city of Pittsburgh, let alone Lawrenceville, when properties are going for over $400,000 per property. It is time for city council and the members of this city who have a vested interest in this city to consider those of us who do not make enough to afford such a rent and/or a mortgage. Land banking, the URA, and other corporate entities are not considering the people of the land and to stop putting profit over the people. These properties is another abuser of this people, not putting people over profit. So we're asking city council to consider that Lawrenceville being the model for gentrification, if you will, we have fancy words for it, but I just simply call it gentrification. That the people of Pittsburgh are being booted out by corporate interests. And I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's right. It's morally, it's terrible. It's despicable what's happening to the city. And if this is the blueprint for what is to come, then I fear that there won't be many people left like me in the city of Pittsburgh. What you call so-called black and brown people will be priced out of a city to which they have called from all their life. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tim Stevens, followed by Corey Ritchie. Mr. Stevens, are you there? We can't hear you.
I am.
There you are.
Am I okay?
You're on.
Okay, cool. To our, the councilwoman Gross and all the members of city council, I had hoped all of council would be here for such an important conversation. But I will be sending a follow-up letter to all council members. As you may remember in our BIPAP letter to city council on May 5th, the Black Political Empowerment Project spoke of the need to seriously address the loss of close to 9% of the city's black population between 2014 and 2018, estimated to be some 7,000 residents. It's in the spirit that we encourage use of a seriously expanded use of inclusionary housing zones in Pittsburgh in general, which would have housing developers be required to build a share of affordable housing for low to moderate income people. The troubling expansion of gentrification in our Pittsburgh neighborhoods must be stopped, encountered with the creation and implementation of policies and procedures which will help guarantee much-needed low to moderate income in Pittsburgh, income housing in Pittsburgh. The Black Political Empowerment Project is strongly encouraging, advocating for methods which will help guarantee such housing and new developments, which will allow for low to moderate income housing in these developments on a permanent basis. Permanent is an important word here. We encourage the city of Pittsburgh to consider unit set-asides, density bonuses, which might allow developers to increase more units per acre as height in which more units could be added on a site, expediting approval in order to fast-track projects and able to move them forward, possibility of certain fee waivers or reductions. But whatever processes used should lay the foundation for a permanent solution to the loss of low to moderate income housing that has negatively affected Pittsburgh for some time. It should also be a system created that will guarantee a continued tracking of the success or the failure of these processes. So we're hoping that the current conversation will be supported in terms of Lawrenceville, where there's been a tremendous lack or loss of African-American people, and that these processes again be made on a permanent basis to help guarantee that not only people who have certain high incomes can live in Pittsburgh, but those with low incomes can live as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Up next, we have Corey Ritchie, followed by David Brangin. Not seeing Mr. Ritchie. Mr. Finer, do you see him in our participants?
He's not here.
Okay, he's not here. So Dave Brangin, followed by Richard Worsbowski. I'm not sure if I said that right. I think I've heard that pronounced before, but I'm not sure if I said it right. And if Mr. Ritchie comes back, then we'll let him speak too.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Dave Brangin. I'm a resident of Lawrenceville and the director of Lawrenceville United. I'm here to proudly support the permanent adoption of mandatory inclusionary zoning in Lawrenceville. Inclusionary zoning in Lawrenceville is one of the first mandatory policies in Pennsylvania. The city of Pittsburgh should be proud to be a leader in the state, and we are thankful for the work of Mayor Paduto, Councilwoman Gross, and city planning in getting us here. More importantly, the requirements are about to make a real difference. In under two years, this policy has mandated 40 new units of affordable housing. 35 of these units are under construction as we speak. Notably, this project closed on its financing in May of 2020, when uncertainty about COVID-19 was at its peak. If projects can move forward under these circumstances, clearly the policy has proven it's feasible. So from our perspective, it's a no-brainer to permanently adopt IZ for Lawrenceville. It works, and it reflects our community values that all our neighbors should be able to continue to call Lawrenceville home as it grows. However, we must also be clear-eyed about the challenge. In just five years, Lawrenceville lost half of our population living in poverty, half of our black neighbors, over one-third of our kids under 18, and over 10% of our neighborhood wisdom keepers are adults above 65. COVID-19 has only exacerbated these issues. I really struggle to find the words to articulate what this mass displacement has meant for our community and for the families that I've known. These are not just numbers. The Lawrenceville community has made it abundantly clear that it wants our housing policies to actually meet the needs of our residents. So at the same time that I'm urging council to pass this ordinance to make IZ permanent, I also want to stress the need and the case for growing the affordability requirement as city planning shared in their presentation. When the mayor's inclusionary housing and incentive zoning exploratory committee worked with national expert Grounded Solutions to develop a robust and sophisticated model to determine the feasibility of an IZ policy, they determined that 10% requirement was feasible citywide, and a higher requirement was feasible in stronger markets. Today, Lawrenceville is squarely in that stronger market category based on the most recent market value analysis. The key question with inclusionary zoning policies is not whether a market can bear an inclusionary zoning policy, but what is the right inclusionary zoning policy for that market? As the IPod has shown, this inclusionary zoning policy has been right for Lawrenceville. And we look forward to working with city planning and city council in the near term to grow the affordability requirement, now that it's clear that our market is right for it. Our community needs it and supports it, and in the meantime, we urge you to make this inclusionary zoning policy permanent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Worsbowski. And after that, we have Andre Delval. Do you see Mr. Worsbowski here? No?
No, I don't see him.
That's okay. Again, if you, if you join later, we will try to circle back. We'll keep our eye on the panelists and participant lists. So next, we have Andre Delval. And following that, we have Christina Howell.
Hi, good afternoon, Chairperson. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome, thank you so much. Good afternoon, Chairperson Gross and members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on the following legislation, 2021 1414, establishing an inclusionary housing overlay district in the Lawrenceville section of Pittsburgh. My name is Andre Del Valley. I am the director of Government Affairs for the Pennsylvania Apartment Association, where a statewide organization representing apartment owners, managing companies, and their industry suppliers, representing 37,407 units and 21 management companies here in Pittsburgh. The legislation before you today is a recommendation to city council from the Department of City Planning to adopt inclusionary housing overlay as a permanent overlay in Lawrenceville by or prior to the interim planning overlay expiring on July 25th, 2021. We appreciate the Department of Planning and the bill-sponsored intent with the legislation. However, we believe that this legislation, if made permanent, would create a number of unintended consequences for the residents of Lawrenceville and across the city of Pittsburgh. Many construe this legislation as a tax on development, therefore increasing building costs, as well as therefore increasing building costs as well as reducing the housing supply, therefore discouraging development in those areas. Many jurisdictions who have adopted inclusionary zoning housing requirements end up seeing significant declines in the issuance of construction permits for housing development. The goal of inclusionary zoning policy is to leverage new market rate development to provide affordable units. However, because inclusionary zoning depends on market rate development, it only works when new development is occurring. When development of housing is reduced, as it has been during the pandemic, a jurisdiction is unable to keep up with the demand for housing, and vacancy rates decrease for existing supply, causing rents for existing housing to increase. While these programs are portrayed as a panacea, in reality, they're ineffective and have shown in practice to generate literal in the way of affordable housing. Developers who continue to construct housing during, in jurisdictions with these set-side requirements will also attempt to offset the costs associated with the programs by increasing costs for the market rate units or focus on developing luxury units, thereby making it more expensive for the medium-income households. In many cases, leapfrog effect may also occur where developers simply select municipalities without affordable housing requirements to ensure their projects pencil out and remain profitable. As written, this overlay would be in effect for 35 years and would restart the term if a property is sold prior to the meeting of the 35-year requirement, which we urge you to reconsider. Many municipalities offer incentives, including density bonuses, tax abatements, reduced parking requirements to offset the cost of set-side requirements, which we urge you to consider, although they are rarely substantial enough to eliminate the cost imposed by these mandates. There are also a number of reforms that municipalities can do to increase the development of affordable housing unit, of affordable housing developers, including employing buy-right development for affordable housing developers, modifying building codes to reduce regulatory and construction costs while maintaining safety and security of residents, and creating funds solely for affordable housing.
Thank you. Next, we have Christina Howell, followed by Nancy Gippert.
Hello. Christina Howell, Executive Director of Bloomfield Development Corporation, speaking on behalf of Bloomfield Development Corporation today. I am speaking today in support of creating the permanent inclusionary zoning overlay in Lawrenceville. As Dave Brangin spoke, it has created over 40 affordable units to be built that very likely would not have been built otherwise. Clearly, the pilot has been a success by any measure and should be made permanent. I'm glad to hear in the introduction to this hearing that there is consideration to expand inclusionary zoning in both geographic area and percentage of affordable units required. I would urge that this expansion takes, take place as quickly as possible. The pace of development and redevelopment in many neighborhoods, such as Bloomfield, is currently such that displacement is picking up pace by the day. In the Bloomfield area alone, there are three housing developments currently in various states of community process. If all three of those developments were required to build 10% of the units as affordable housing, more than 36 units would be built in less than two years and within less than one square mile. There's a widespread misconception that Bloomfield does not have any large developable parcels left after the former SureSafe site is developed. The manner in which the proposed Hampton Inn development on Penn Avenue in Bloomfield assembled multiple parcels quietly indicates that that is in fact a misconception. Construction of market-rate housing in the Baum Center corridor shows no sign of calming with a 128-unit market-rate building currently proposed on Melwood with absolutely no affordable units planned in that proposed building. When there could be a minimum of 12 new units, as the affordability requirement currently stands, were inclusionary zoning overlaid in that area. In Bloomfield Development's seven-year housing plan, developed over 12 months in 2019 to 2020 with significant community input, equal emphasis was placed on, by the community, on creating and preserving affordable housing. Expanding inclusionary zoning into Bloomfield is one of the tools identified by the community and by BDC on our work plan that will begin immediately creating units that residents could move into to stem the displacement we're currently seeing. It didn't create a hardship for those developers in Lawrenceville to create affordable units, clearly because developers continue to buy and develop property in Lawrenceville. BDC urges that the percentage of affordable units required be raised. As mentioned earlier by Director Dash, city planning's own recommendations call for a larger percentage of affordable units required in larger housing developments in areas where the market will bear it, which the market in Bloomfield certainly will, where it expanded into Bloomfield. Thank you for your time for holding this hearing and for openly considering the possibility of, or acknowledging the possibility of expanding the breadth of this inclusionary zoning overlay.
Thank you. Next, we have Nancy Gippert and following Nancy Clara Wyble. You see Nancy. Nancy, are you unmuted yet? Nancy, we see you, but we see your mute button on. Mr. Finer, did you unmute Nancy Gippert?
She's probably need to try the star six.
Nancy, if you're on a phone, you might strike star six. No, sorry. How about we go to Clara Wyble if she's there? And, oh, Nancy, there you are.
Okay.
We can hear you.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. First, I want to thank everyone in the city who has been so helpful in bringing this to reality, particularly Councilperson Gross, who's worked hard for a number of years on this. I live on 46th Street in the Ninth Ward in Lawrenceville, and this is going to be very brief because I simply wanted to add my voice as another Lawrenceville resident who is supportive of this action. Since the temporary iPod was first established, as has been mentioned, 40 affordable units are being developed, and the cost of housing keeps going up. More and more residents are being pushed out of the neighborhood. And in the future, as has been brought up, and I'm happy to hear that there is support for this from planning, we believe, once the housing needs assessment is completed, that the numbers can be raised to 15%. And that's it. I just wanted to add my support, and thank you again, everyone.
Thank you, Nancy. Next, we have Clara Wyble, followed by Dan Yablonsky. I don't see Clara, so I'm going to go next to Daniel Blonsky, and then following Dan will be Sam Spearing.
Hello. Thank you, Councilwoman Gross, and thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilman Wilson for being here today to hear public hearing, public testimony. Thank you, Andrew, and thank you, Christopher, for your presentation. But my name is Daniel Blonsky. I'm the Director of Communications for Pittsburghers for Public Transit. We're a grassroots union of transit riders and workers who organize for more expanded and accessible public transit here in Pittsburgh. I'm testifying today in support of making this inclusionary zoning overlay district permanent because more affordable housing units for more people will create a better transit system in a more accessible Pittsburgh. Back in 2017, Pittsburghers for Public Transit conducted one of the most in-depth surveys to date over 100 Pittsburghers who've been displaced from their homes. Many of those people we spoke to were displaced out of the city, and nearly all reported worst access to transit and to groceries, childcare, healthcare, jobs, and the important social connections to families, churches, and friends that the public transit system provides. Affordable housing is critical to strong families, critical to strong transit, and a strong Pittsburgh. I'm testifying to support this legislation, but also to say that our affordable housing policy cannot stop here. It's been years since the Affordable Housing Task Force has put forward a strong list of recommendations and identified nearly 20,000-unit deficit of affordable housing here in our city. I'm glad that Andrew Dash and Christopher Corbett say that there is work in the, in the pipeline to update that survey and those recommendations along with it. But, you know, through following that agenda, we can make this city more affordable. But as we do, we must not lose the opportunity inherent in our most transit-rich, walkable, and bikeable neighborhoods. East Liberty, Shadyside, Oakland Downtown, Bloomfield, Squirrel Hill, Pittsburgh's neighborhoods with the best public transit, walkability and bikeability are unsurprisingly the same neighborhoods with the hottest markets. We need to follow the lead of our neighbors to the south in Dormont, who right now are working on passing a new zoning regulation to to leverage their, their strong public transit. So Pittsburgh needs to look to also create transit-oriented development overlay districts to build more affordable units in our neighborhoods with strong transit and walkability access to groceries. An affordable transit-oriented development overlay district will capitalize on the value of a public transit system and begin a virtuous cycle, supporting vibrant neighborhoods, diverse neighbors, and small businesses citywide. So in summary, Pittsburghers for Public Transit supports making this IZ iPod permanent, but we can't stop there. We must move quickly to pass a city-wide inclusionary zoning policy with higher levels of affordability as well as create transit-oriented development overlay districts to provide access and affordability for all people of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. I think I see Clara Wyble in the waiting room. I think maybe there were some technical difficulties, so Mr. Finer, if you want to try Clara Wyble again. I'm getting a message. She might be struggling with an outdated Zoom version. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are you able to get her back?
She's, she's on. She can, but I think David is saying she, her, her, she's unable to unmute because of her version.
So I'm sorry about that, Ms. Wyble. Well, we'll keep checking in if we can get something.
We'll check back.
All right. So next, I have Sam Spearing, followed by Dan Cubus.
Hi, my name is Sam Spearing, and I'm the Housing and Mobility Coordinator with Bloomfield Development Corporation, and I'm also a resident and renter in Bloomfield. Thank you to the council members that are here today and the city planning staff who presented earlier. I'm here to speak in favor of making the inclusionary zoning overlay in Lawrenceville permanent. Having seen the success of the interim planning overlay district over the past year and a half and knowing that a multitude of reports and studies have suggested inclusionary zoning, it only makes sense to make it a permanent policy for Lawrenceville. I also want to emphasize that more can and should be done with inclusionary zoning, both in Lawrenceville and beyond. Increasing the percentage of required affordable units from 10% to 15% in accordance with market conditions is one easy step that should be considered. I also want to stress that the city's Affordable Housing Task Force and other affordable housing advocates have stated that inclusionary zoning is a policy that could be implemented citywide. With a shortage of thousands of affordable units that impacts those at the lowest income levels most, it's important that conversations about expanding this policy are started as quickly as possible. Having seen more and more neighbors being priced out of their rental units, I can't emphasize enough the need for more new affordable units. In my own apartment building of 12 units, where the entire building is being displaced via, via increased rents, three of which are families with children, and many of them are having trouble finding alternative housing in Bloomfield because the rents are being increased. I urge council to vote to permanently institute the Lawrenceville Inclusionary Zoning Overlay District and consider an eventual increase in the percentage of units required to be affordable. In addition, the expansion of this overlay into other neighborhoods, including Bloomfield, would be a simple way to increase the number of affordable units in the city. Bloomfield has seen a clear need for more affordable housing and would welcome inclusionary zoning as a tool for our community. I hope the council will continue to engage in important discussions regarding solutions to our affordable housing crisis in the city. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Spearing. Lost my screen. There we go. Next, we have Mr. Cubus, Dan Cubus, sorry, and John Renda.
Hello, I just unmuted. Is that, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, awesome. Um, so yeah, so thanks to everyone here today. My name is Dan Cubus. I live at 184 39th Street. I've been here for about 12 years, Lawrenceville resident. And so I'm directly across the street from Arsenal 201, and I guess I'll just kind of start by saying that it's exciting to me and others on the street here to have the affordable units that we heard about earlier coming there. So I think that's, just as, as someone who lives so close to that particular development, I'll, I'll state my enthusiasm for that. I think that I just want to speak today in favor of the permanent proposal. I really think that the idea of making that overlay permanent is exciting to me. It, you know, signals a lasting commitment to inclusionary zoning in Lawrenceville, which I think is great. Personally, I'm excited about it. But also, I think, you know, we've heard already today from some people talk about kind of the loss of population, people who get displaced for various reasons in Lawrenceville. So there's so many good reasons, I think, to adopt, to make this permanent. So I'm excited about that. And also, I would just say that the, it would be great. We've also heard from a number of people, and I'll just kind of join the chorus of voices who are saying that an increase to at least 15% of an affordability requirement, if not more, would be something I also support. So that's all I've got. Thanks a lot, everybody.
Thank you. Next, we have John Renda, followed by Ed Nasser.
Good afternoon. My name is John Renda. I'm, am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you for the online hearing. I am, I'm an attorney. I am experienced in real estate, and my place is about two blocks from Children's. I've looked at your proposed bill, and I'd urge against it. Your legislation provides, under this new bill, that a two-bedroom unit would rent for no more than $934, including utilities. Utilities, utilities for two people of just $350 a month means that this is a $600 rental for a new or renovated two-bedroom apartment, which is an absurdly low rate. And I challenge you to find any $600 newer renovated two-room bedroom rental price or, or $934 with all utilities. The plan lowers the property value for the people of Lawrenceville artificially. If I can buy a new or renovated property, the price of which is artificially lowered by this legislation, then Lawrenceville residents' property market value drops. That's basic market economics. This legislation then lowers the property value of people's homes in Lawrenceville, the repository of, of all of our residents' greatest savings. Additionally, the legislation also artificially shifts more of the tax burden for local services onto the people paying the actual market values or rates for apartments or homes or condos. It shifts that tax burden more unfairly to the homeowner, swift to make up for the artificially lowering prices in their taxes for sales and services. More importantly, the legislation harms overall growth for the surrounding communities. You've noticed that when Lawrenceville grew pricier, that surrounding communities saw growth. Why? Well, people who maybe wanted to live in Lawrenceville instead chose Bloomfield or Garfield or Millvale or Sharpsburg. And over the last 10 years, we've seen all of these communities have growth, all of them. This legislation artificially hampers growth. I would encourage this body to avoid the legislation. It's bad for Lawrenceville and Bloomfield, Garfield, Millvale, Sharpsburg, and the city as a whole. If the city wants to see how Lawrenceville residents feel about this, let's put a referendum down. Let them vote on it in the next election. But I would tell you that Lawrenceville residents already feel as if, if, as if Lawrenceville is, is overdeveloped as it is. Butler Street is a parking lot at certain times of the day. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you. Next, we have Ed Nasser, followed by John Rhodes.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ed Nasser. I'm the Executive Director of City of Bridges Community Land Trust. We're located at 143rd Street in central Lawrenceville. And we're here today to voice our support for the adoption of a permanent inclusionary zoning overlay district in Lawrenceville and throughout the city of Pittsburgh. City of Bridges Community Land Trust envisions diverse communities where people thrive. City of Bridges Community Land Trust envisions diverse communities where people thrive, establish roots, build wealth, and foster community ties without the risk of displacement. And a permanent inclusionary zoning policy is one tool at our disposal to bring this vision into reality. Make no mistake, our city faces an affordable housing crisis, one that has only been exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic. And I feel now is a good time to also point out that this housing crisis that we face has been brought on by what many people would also call growth. So what is growth to one person can be displacement to hundreds and thousands of our neighbors. Housing affordability and equitable access to the places we call ours are the most, is one of the most important issues we face as a region. Public assets like transit and parks, river fronts and employment centers, these should not be privatized by and for a relatively small group of citizens. These are public assets that ought to remain accessible to the public regardless of anyone's income. While inclusionary zoning won't solve all of our housing challenges in the city or in Lawrenceville, it's an increasingly prevalent tool used by over 900 municipalities throughout the United States. Furthermore, when done appropriately, and there is national research from Grounded Solutions Network and countless others to prove this, that inclusionary zoning does not deter development, does not decrease property values surrounding the area, and does not raise housing prices because of a shortage of production. And we've seen that iPod works. We've seen 40 units that have been mandated, 35 of which will be occupied later this year. 35 low income people and families will have housing because of this policy that wouldn't have had it elsewhere otherwise. In our current context, where the racial wealth gap is widening, home prices and rents are exploding, and public and private dollars are becoming ever more scarce, we must invest in proven models that stabilize communities and prevent displacement. And a permanent citywide inclusionary zoning policy is one such tool. IZ should become a permanent policy for the Lawrenceville neighborhood and the city as a whole. And we support the calls from our partners at Lawrenceville United and Councilwoman Gross's leadership to increase the percentage of required affordable units from 10% to 15% in accordance with the MVA metrics developed by Reinvestment Fund and the Department of City Planning. Thank you so much for your time and all of your work on this incredibly important policy.
Thank you. And next we have John Rhodes, followed by Robert Damewood.
Thanks so much, Councilwoman Gross, and hello to everyone. Thanks so much for making the time to consider this very important piece of legislation. My name is John Rhodes. I'm a resident of Polish Hill and I serve as co-chair of the Housing and Development Committee for Polish Hill. I want to, first off, just say that I'm here to speak in support of the bill and that the Polish Hill Civic Association has been a huge fan of the inclusionary zoning principle and furthers.
John, we lost you there. You just cut out. Oh no, we seem to have lost him entirely. John, if you can make it back, we're happy to let you back in. Next, we have Robert Damewood, followed, oh, John's back. John?
I'm so sorry. I don't know what happened there.
I don't know either, but you're back now.
Okay, so long story short, I'll just jump into some basic numbers. As of 2018, among the 1,331 residents in Polish Hill, 172 or nearly 13% were living below the poverty line. Meanwhile, the median sale price of the neighborhood from 2015 to 2018 has more than tripled from $67,500 to $217,500. Many of Polish Hill residents know someone who's been displaced from their home, whether they were renting or priced out from owning a home. And inclusionary zoning is one way for us to address.
I'm so sorry. We lost your audio feed again. I can see you on the screen, but I can't hear you. Oh, there it goes again. I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on to our next person, but it seems like we owe Mr. Rhodes a minute or two, probably. Robert Damewood, followed by Amber Thompson.
Thank you, Councilwoman. My name is Bob Damewood. I'm a staff attorney with Regional Housing Legal Services, and I'm also a resident of Mount Washington. Thank you for holding a hearing on this important topic. Um, I'd like to provide a little historical perspective. I moved to Pittsburgh in 1997. At that time, the city was in the early stages of a 25-year effort to demolish over 10,000 units of public and HUD-supported housing. Manchester Broadhead Manor, Pennley Park Apartments, Alquita Terrace, Hamilton Larmor, Auburn Towers, Bedford Dwellings, Westgate Village, Federal American Properties, St. Clair Village, Arlington Heights, 30s Hills, Addison Terrace, East Liberty Gardens, I'm probably leaving some out. All of this deeply affordable housing was demolished or otherwise taken offline. Much of it was replaced with a smaller number of units, usually less affordable, in newly built mixed income developments. Thousands of extremely low income, predominantly black families were uprooted and displaced. The rationale for most of this demolition and displacement was that concentrated poverty is bad and that mixed income communities are more sustainable. What does this have to do with IZ? This. If the goal of creating mixed income housing was important enough to justify uprooting and displacing thousands of Pittsburgh families, then it has to be important enough to justify requiring market rate housing developers, almost all of whom receive a city tax subsidy, to accept a slightly smaller profit margin on their deals. Four years ago, Pittsburgh's IZ Exploratory Committee evaluated market rate housing development and performance data to determine how much inclusionary affordability would be feasible without deterring investment in new market rate housing. What we found is that a 10% IZ requirement would be feasible citywide and that a higher requirement would be feasible in stronger market neighborhoods where most of the housing development is taking place. Since then, Pittsburgh housing market has grown even stronger and the Lawrenceville iPod has shown that mandatory IZ does not deter development. By the way, the horror stories that the speaker from the Apartment Owners Association told council earlier aren't supported by the research. I'd be glad to discuss that in greater detail sometime. Anyway, for these reasons, please vote to make the Lawrenceville IZ district permanent, but please don't stop there. We need a robust citywide IZ policy. And city government needs to show that the goal of creating mixed income communities is just as important when it comes to market rate housing as it is when it comes to dismantling public and assisted housing. The longer we wait to do this, the more mixed on housing opportunities we will lose. Thank you for your time and your continued support for inclusionary affordable housing.
Thank you. Next, we have Amber Thompson, followed by Rebecca Altis.
Hello, my name's Amber Thompson. I am a resident of Lawrenceville. I live on Holly Street and I've lived in Lawrenceville for about six years now. I'm calling in support of the permanent overlay of IZ. And as a black resident in Lawrenceville, as a black person in this city, I'm just processing why a tool to create mixed use housing hasn't been approved yet. This region has lost thousands, tens of thousands of black people. And we know that this is not sustainable if this can, if this city wants to continue to grow. And Lawrenceville is a precursor for every neighborhood following. And implementing something like IZ, like Bob said, is not the only tool, but it shows a commitment to the change that city council and our other elected officials have stated in their campaigns. So again, I'm here to support it, but also here to question any folks who are in support of a huge white population across this region and thinking that is what we are here to do and thinking that is what we're trying to build in this city and thinking that that is okay. Those thoughts and feelings are not, I'm just very shocked at things I've heard today. They're just, they're not acceptable anymore. So again, I'm just in support of IZ and thank you for for even thinking about increasing it to 15%.
Thank you. Next, we have Rebecca Altis and followed by Jam Hammett.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Altis. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I live on Fifth Street. I moved to Lawrenceville 20 years ago. And I am here in support of the inclusionary zoning overlay, both in making it permanent and also expanding to the 15% as well as sooner rather than later, expanding it across the city and strengthening it. One of the things that is interesting when I listen to the people who who may say it is that I think that Lawrenceville actually very clearly shows that the economics they're talking about are not proven through Lawrenceville. The way that Lawrenceville grew and thrived initially and became this place that unfortunately has displaced so many people is through a mix of residents, through a mix of people, businesses, interests and needs. And without that mix of a community, frankly, the communities do tend to stagnate. What what drew me to Lawrenceville were so many people who had been there for generations, as well as young people with children, as well as people who grew up there and moved down the block, as well as short term and long term renters. And all of those people together are what made sure that we had a thriving library, that made sure we had a thriving community garden, made sure we had a thriving market at Arsenal and and made sure that all of those things happened. And one of the things that we always see is that as the community builds and grows into this lovely thriving thing, that displacement that happens drives out so many of the passionate community members who made the community such a wonderful place to be and deprize them of the resources that they helped build. And many of the people who have more resources available to them anywhere actually don't contribute as much to the community because they have less need to do so. So that's, that's largely what I'm here to say. I'm here in support of that. And as I said, just to say that not only is it, is it the right thing to do for the, for displaced residents, not only is it the right thing to do for people who are lower income, it's the right thing to do for Pittsburgh and the vibrancy of our city and our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jam Hammond, followed by Adelina Malito, Malito, sorry. We have Mr. Hammond. I'm looking at our, oh, we lost him. Okay. So I'll take Adelina Malito next. We didn't have anyone else kind of come back, did we?
Yeah, we did. Corey, number three is.
Yeah, Adelina, if you wouldn't mind waiting just a minute, we'll go back to Mr. Ritchie and then we'll come back to Adelina Malito. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Can that hear me?
We can hear you.
I apologize for missing my earlier slot. I was still in court and I was unable to get the afternoon off. I just want to join all of my fellow residents. I currently live at 11545th Street. Before that, I lived on Butler Street, an apartment that I rented. All of us in Lawrenceville overwhelmingly support this legislation. We support enshrining the inclusionary zoning overlay district permanently for us and we hope that the city council will bring it about for the rest of the neighborhoods around us and the rest of the city because it has been such a tool to increase our vibrancy already in the year and a half, the two years that it's been in place. We created 40 units that would not, most of which would not have been there otherwise. This is something that we want for ourselves and I think the rest of the city shows that they want it for themselves too. So we just urge you to support this and I really appreciate you taking my time. Thank you.
Corey, we can go back now to Adelina Malito, followed by Megan Conforhammond.
Hello. Hi, so good afternoon and thank you so much for allowing me to talk today. I just want you to know that I am in support of this inclusionary zoning overlay. I've lived in Lawrenceville for about 13 years. When I moved in, moved here after college, a poor college student, I picked this neighborhood because all of my friends lived in Lawrenceville. It was affordable. It was walkable. It had great transportation amenities that appealed to me and even more was a sense of community. Basically, Lawrenceville has it all. And I love the community and my friends that I made with the local businesses and neighbors. And I know if I need anything from my neighbors, they're here and the same, they know the same of me. I've often picked up groceries for some of the neighbors that do not drive, that are older, especially with what happened with COVID. But this sense of community is being threatened daily. I know that as of right now, I'm the only one left out of my friend group that is still able to live in Lawrenceville. My neighbors speak about being worried about being priced out daily from their landlords and just raising of rent and where would they go after living in this neighborhood for years? The people I moved here to be around have been moved further and further from the city and further and further from safety nets and those public transportations and the ability to get to their jobs and since in their community centers. Inclusionary zoning thinks about a bigger picture. We as a citizens of Pittsburgh really need to think about the bigger picture instead of just a small drop. We need to think about the families and friends in the city that need an affordable place to live. It's not acceptable to think that big corporate companies should take precedence over the real life residents who live and work in this area. We really need this inclusionary zoning permanently to give real life people the option of this neighborhood and to stay in this neighborhood. And I'm very proud to support this because I know that this neighborhood has everything and and I want people to be able to stay in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Megan Conforhammond, followed by Lauren Byrne Connolly.
Good afternoon. My name is Megan Conforhammond. I am the Executive Director of the Fair Housing Partnership of Greater Pittsburgh. We are a nonprofit that is a full service fair housing organization that enforces the fair housing discrimination laws in Pittsburgh. I want to say that inclusionary zoning not only creates affordable housing, it also contributes to combating historic and ongoing racial segregation and displacement in our city. The lack of investment in and the removal of wealth from Pittsburgh black neighborhoods have resulted in severe racial segregation in our city. Recognize that historically, a direct line can be drawn from zoning being race-based to density-based. Zoning ordinances in US towns were only proliferated after the end of slavery when freed slaves moved north in the Great Migration. Zoning was originally based on race and then was struck down by the US Supreme Court in 1917. Immediately after, density-based zoning was developed and later upheld by the US Supreme Court in 1926. 1917, 1926, and Pittsburgh's original zoning ordinance was enacted in 1923 in this context. So density-based zoning was then coupled with racial covenants, sundown towns and redlining, resulting in the residential racial segregation that we have today. The data is explicit that the city of Pittsburgh is racially segregated. And so remember that government policy based on historical land ownership from 1917 to 1926 was about providing white landed men and people who weren't white men who could own property could not fundamentally afford single family homes when we created density-based zoning as a proxy for the race-based zoning that was originally created. While the North did not have explicit Jim Crow laws, it was created in pretext and subtext. So in 2021, to understand residential development is to understand socioeconomic displacement. The loss of Black Pittsburgh in the wake of development is stark. And so I ask council to recognize that inclusionary zoning is a tool for racial equity to embed housing choice in our city. After, as a government, we previously made the decision to remove housing choice. And so we are not imposing new regulation. We are reinstating the civil rights of black and brown and all of Pittsburgh to choose which neighborhood. to choose which neighborhood to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Confor-Hammond. Next, we have Lauren Byrne Connolly.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Councilwoman Gross and other members of council for the opportunity to speak to you. And thank you to all of my neighbors who have already testified. I'm here as a Lawrenceville resident and as the Executive Director of Lawrenceville Corporation, an organization serving as a catalyst and conduit for responsible growth and reinvestment in a neighborhood which currently has one of the strongest housing markets in the country. At LC, we recognize that while no panacea, permanent inclusionary zoning is a necessary tool for reversing our housing affordability crisis and ensuring that our community truly offers housing for all. Thanks to Councilwoman Deb Gross, Mayor Peduto, the Department of City Planning, and to Lawrenceville United's tireless leadership and advocacy, iPod Six came to Lawrenceville at a critical time. Lawrenceville was in the middle of an economic renaissance, which brought reduced crime rates, improved schools, new jobs, access to public transportation, and world-class healthcare facilities. Yet, just as these opportunities abounded, rents skyrocketed and at the same time, the neighborhood lost about half of its housing choice voucher units, low-income households, black residents, and seniors. We are now facing a housing affordability crisis at the national, local, and neighborhood level, a sad truth that has not gone unnoticed by the Lawrenceville community. Beginning with the Upper Lawrenceville Plan in 2013, the neighborhood made the declarative statement that affordable housing will be a priority. Since then, this imperative has repeatedly risen to the surface among community members and has been further highlighted by census data, expert opinions, and tragic stories of loss. IZ works in Lawrenceville and it has not slowed development here. In the 18 months that iPod Six was in effect, two development projects created a total of 40 units with guaranteed affordable pricing for the next 35 years. That's residents that might otherwise have been forced to leave our neighborhood, who now have the opportunity to partake in economic growth. If we truly want Pittsburgh to be the most livable city for all, we need to implement solutions commensurate to the challenges at hand. That's why we're urging council to permanently adopt the IZO, but also with a commitment to creating a system or policy that will increase the percent of set-aside units based on market strengths. As the city's Inclusionary Zoning Exploratory Committee found, IZ tools must be tailored to unique market conditions where instituted. Lawrenceville's IZO, if tailored to our community's market conditions, should include a higher percent set aside based on recent housing data and market value analysis. We also look forward to a geographic expansion of the policy as hundreds of units are currently underway, one block from Lawrenceville, now with no affordability whatsoever. Community demand for affordable housing in Lawrenceville has been well documented and we now have objective data verifying the market can support our needs. The Lawrenceville community overwhelmingly supports IZ and we've made it clear that we want our community to rebound on our terms and that means housing for all. We hope city council will embrace the full feasibility of what IZ has to offer our neighborhood and to our families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The clerk has definitely made that that exhausts our registered speakers and we haven't reconnected with anyone we might, who might have missed or, or had technical difficulties. So, we're at the end of our list of speakers. So now, I'll give council members a chance to make some comments. We will, again, just if you're listening, this bill will, will be on the council's standing committee agenda coming up soon this month, if not next week, the following week. I'll, you talked to Mr. Wilson, he'll be in his committee, so he will be able to put it back on the agenda. But for now, I'll just ask our members, Mr. Wilson or Ms. Strasburger, if they want to make comment.
Sure. And thank you, everyone, for coming today. It's been, for the most part, enjoyable to listen to the comments that I agree with and consider, you know, I consider this, this bill an important one and to really set the tone for maybe what we do in, in other parts of the city. I'm interested to ask a lot of questions, but I may save the, I think I'm going to save those. Sometimes I have the, the unique, you know, I have a challenge of understanding the difference between a hearing and a post-agenda. So, I feel like I want to ask a lot of questions, but um, you know, it was great to hear everyone from Lawrenceville and all the support that they have been working on and they put together to come forward and, and to speak so clearly as to what they would like. You know, I had the fortunate opportunity to come into council with this already being passed and I was happy to, you know, give support in the extension and I look forward to voting in favor of this and, and, and looking into other areas or, or citywide that we do this. So, thank you, everyone that came today. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. I'm chair and thank you to everyone who is here today, including members of City Planning and, and those who spoke today. I won't really add too, too much except to say that I, I agree. I'm, I'm in favor of this, this is, is one of many tools. I think that we have tools that are more like mandates and tools that also then encourage affordable housing. And I specifically was kind of found in myself nodding my head when Daniel Blonsky was speaking on behalf of Pittsburgh's Public Transit because he really, you know, hit the nail on the head. And he said that well-resourced neighborhoods like Squirrel Hill and Shady Side need to see more affordable housing because they do have the access to transit and they do have the walk-on communities. We want to do both. We want to create more walkability and better transit and more resources, add those resources to, to all of our ninety neighborhoods in the city. And we also want to make sure that everyone can live in a place like Squirrel Hill or Shady Side where I represent. So, I agree that this is one of many tools that we should be employing across the city. And, and I want to make sure that, yes, it's done wisely, that it's done in a smart way and it's done, it's applied judiciously in places where there is a hot market. I know that we'll have, when we do discuss this in council, we'll have members from other parts of the city who might say, we're not quite ready for this in our part of town and I understand that too. But I will save my questions for the time when we are really considering this in council and digging into it and I'll, I'll email some of my questions over to planning now so I can start to, to understand just one question that I have. But um, other than that, I just wanted to, to declare that I am in support of this tool. I'm in support of this bill. Yeah. I look forward to further discussion.
Thank you. I'll just chime in and say thank you to the planning department for what was multi-year effort, for sure. And one of the things I'll be asking when we get, I think, in front of us on our council agenda is, are we ready for those applications? I haven't had an update for a while on how the legislation points to the housing authority to accept those things. I don't think we need to go into it now. We'll wait till we get to it on our council agenda, but that's what I will be asking you. And because we do have those rental units ready, coming online soon, as well as the five for-sale units, which I think was also an interesting aspect of the, the interim planning overlay district. I definitely want to thank Lawrencevilleans for showing up again and again and again and again. Having advocated in the, in between the mile markers there and the timeline that the planning department put up, there was a tremendous amount of advocacy in, in the gaps in between some of those years by Lawrencevilleans to see this planning overlay district be put in place. And I don't want to neglect or fail to record for posterity that it was really the advocacy by residents and leaders in Lawrenceville that really pushed for this, this pilot project to even be put in place two years ago. Excuse me, it's allergy season here. And we, we will, I think, be able to talk a little bit about the, the technicalities of expansion, while also, I think, be a discussion that we'll, we'll have when we get to city council. We heard very loudly today that there is both the recommendation fund, planning commission, and support from the community to raise that percentage of units from 10% to 15%. And also that there's a call from nearby neighborhoods. Bloomfield always wanted to be included in this pilot project and wasn't included in it. Still wants to be included in this, in the inclusionary zoning mandatory footprint. And Polish Hill as well has a long-running desire to be included and a need to be included, as we heard speakers say. There's now pressure on some of the parcels in Polish Hill, but unfortunately will not see affordable units included. So, I really want to thank everyone from the testimony. I took multiple pages of notes, as I usually do during public hearings. It's so very good to hear firsthand testimony from city residents. I really appreciate everyone taking the time out of their day. Does anyone have any final comments before we adjourn? No. Mr. Wilson, I'll just, you know, we'll talk about when to this legislation can be added back to your committee. We will need to take action on it to make sure that it has time to make it through the system before the, the temporary zoning expires in July.
Yeah, definitely. Just let me know. But we were, we were joined for some time by council president.
I didn't see that. Thank you for pointing that out to me. So, we were joined by council president Teresa Kale Smith as well. Appreciate it. Okay, so without, with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We adjourned.